Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is the August 24th public hearing on the superintendent's contract. We will not be voting on the contract tonight, but we'll be hearing members of the public who would like to speak on this topic. Ms. Lopez, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Yes. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in local papers on August 14th, 2021, and August 17th, 2021. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV, Channel 77, and Fios, Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communications devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Can we take the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamatori?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Mr. Delatorre?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Clufel?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Ms. Simons?
Ms. TeKiri?
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, tonight, we are holding this public hearing on a new five-year contract for our superintendent, Dr. Christine Johnson. Since starting with the district, Dr. Johnson's focus has naturally been on improving academic achievement, coupled with social and emotional well-being of our students and staff. Dr. Johnson's tireless efforts began well before the COVID-19 pandemic, but this past year was a true test. She knew what needed to be done and how to do it for our students, families, teachers, and staff. Her organization, proactive approach, and communication this past year was a success, something that most districts throughout the state and country couldn't pull off. Dr. Johnson's leadership has turned the Hoboken Public Schools around, and she has made the district a model district in so many ways. We thank you for your leadership and dedication to the district, and we look forward to working together in the future. Does anyone else have any comments in addition to that?
I would second those comments.
It doesn't look like we have any public comments tonight. No one signed up down there? All right, well, that was very short and sweet. That concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Welcome to the August Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Ms. Lopez, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Good evening. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on December 26th, 2020, and January 2nd, 2021, as part of the annual notice. A notice of location change was subsequently published on June 18th, 2021. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests they make a statement at this time.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. We have the roll call, please, Ms. Lopez.
Ms. Katamatori?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Mr. Delatorre?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Clufel?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Ms. Simons?
Ms. TeKiri?
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Okay, we don't have any recognitions yet tonight. Soon, our kids will be back, and we look forward to doing that, but we will start with superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson?
So, my superintendent's report this evening just entails two different items. The first is enrollment, usually in August. I report out our enrollment growth. So, from our last day of school last year to our present enrollment count, our increase is 164 additional students at the K-12 level, and I'm happy to report that we have our largest incoming freshman class in over six years. And right now, we're logged in at 169th graders, but the registrations seem to continue to flow in, so I'll report out another count in September for everyone. In addition to that, I would like to provide the board with some general overall updates regarding the September reopening, and first start off with the fact that today, myself and superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, met with the Hoboken Police Department regarding street closures around Brant and Connor School, and their cooperation was greatly and is greatly appreciated. We also met with the HEA leadership, and once again, their cooperation has been fantastic, so we look forward to moving ahead with our new reopening plan. And just to announce some of the key components of the reopening plan, as you know, the governor has issued an executive order regarding mask wearing. The executive order requires school districts in New Jersey, as well as private charter and parochial schools, to insist that masks are worn both during the school day, inside and outside of the building, and after school hours for any school activities. So, that includes any trips that are off-school property, any activities that may run outside of the school day. So, that's part of a statewide mandate. There are clearly individuals that are supportive of the executive order, and there are individuals who are not supportive of the mask mandate. We did cooperate and take in feedback from parents on a lot of components of the plan, but the mask mandate is something that we do not have the authority to provide leeway with. In addition to that executive order, there was also a requirement that was put out by the governor regarding vaccinations and testing. So, yesterday, the governor announced that staff members in public school districts, whether they be teachers, clerks, custodians, paraprofessionals, have until October 18th to be fully vaccinated or submit to weekly or twice-a-week COVID testing. I participated in a number of meetings with superintendents across the state, the county, and also the New Jersey Department of Education. Hoboken is taking a stand where we are actually not going to wait for October 18th to begin that process. We are going to begin testing employees that are not vaccinated, beginning with the opening of school. And in addition to that, we are going to combine both the staff members as well as age-eligible students that have the ability to be vaccinated included in that same requirement in order to ensure consistency across the board. In addition to that, we are going to include weekly testing in a random sampling manner for students, and that random sampling will be based upon the state's positivity rate. So, the state's positivity rate is 2%. 2% of the student population will be randomly selected for testing at the end of each week. We will be working with a lab that will set up testing at each of our schools so that no families or staff members have to go off-site for any kind of testing. The testing will actually be done onsite. As opposed to using an antigen test or a rapid test, we will be using a 48-hour PCR. However, we've been told that the labs are turning results around a lot faster than 48 hours, and the particular lab that we're going to work with will turn the results over between 18 and 24 hours. So, we were happy about that. We also like the idea that, as opposed to our testing last year with Riverside, which was en masse, all of our students, kindergarten through 12th grade, that were on onsite learning, were going to one location for testing. In this case, we will have a testing center set up at every school to reduce flow. We will also notify parents on the Wednesday prior to testing so that if any parent is concerned and wants to be onsite with their child for the testing, they have the ability to let us know. If they so choose to take their child to an alternative location, they may do so. And then, also, we asked the lab that will be working with us if they would also have saliva-based PCR testing on hand so that children that are just not comfortable with the nasal swab could submit to the saliva test for the PCR testing. So, those are some measures that we're putting in place this year, in addition to the testing after the holiday breaks, et cetera. Someone asked me a question today. Are we going to go on remote learning again for a week after the long breaks like Thanksgiving or the winter break or spring break? We were notified that the Department of Education or the governor's requirements do not allow us to pre-plan a remote learning session, so we actually cannot do that this year. In terms of switching from onsite to remote learning, we have the ability to shut a class down and put them on remote learning if the class is quarantined as a result of a positive COVID case. We have the ability to do that. We are told that New Jersey public schools just simply do not have the ability to offer remote learning as a choice. So, we have the ability to shift to remote learning if an entire class is quarantined. However, even along those lines, if a school needs to shift to remote learning or an entire district needs to shift to remote learning for any reason, that can only be done by the New Jersey Department of Health or the local Department of Health. We no longer have the ability to do that. So, if you recall, last year, there was a time when we did put Wallace on remote for two weeks. There were also some times when we put an entire grade level at the middle school on remote just out of precaution. We can do the classrooms, and we can do a grade level, we just can't do an entire school. In terms of quarantining, if a child is set to quarantine as a result of being deemed a close contact or a positive case, we have been told that we can provide work in a Google Classroom for that child with a protocol in place, so if the child does, in fact, complete the assignments, absences will not accrue for the child. Some additional things have to do with quarantining, and that is travel protocols. That seemed to be the biggest topic. I received probably about 15, 16 emails from families about travel quarantining. So, basically, at the start of the school year, we are going to follow the CDC guidelines regarding travel, with international travel being a five-day quarantine. Upon return, an individual would then test using a PCR, 48-hour PCR, and can return as soon as the negative result has been obtained. In terms of traveling in the United States, there is no travel quarantine guidelines for travel within the United States. However, we do request that families, when they return to New Jersey, do have a PCR test if it's outside of the states that the CDC has connected to New Jersey, so New York, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, and Delaware. So, those are the areas. We also have made the determination that we will revisit those travel guidelines at the end of October. We'll see. Right now, the state of New Jersey's positivity rate is deemed high. It's close to 6%. So, as a result of that, we're going to start with that, but prior to moving into the holiday season, for example, Thanksgiving, we will revisit both the travel guidelines, and we will also revisit some other components of the plan based upon what we're seeing both locally and throughout the state. In terms of the street closures, we will continue the street closures around Brant School and around Connors. Brant School will have a closure for arrival and dismissal, as well as recess as a result of the large amount of students. Connors School, the police department has agreed to closure during arrival and dismissal. Brant School's gymnasium area is not being used at this time, where Connors Elementary School's gym can be used and will be used. So, recess, the police have asked us because of new traffic patterns in that area if they can keep the street open during that time, and they wouldn't be able to staff the closure during recess time at Connors. Wallace, we didn't close last year, and we will not close this year primarily because there's county roads and the bus routes go through those areas, so we don't have the ability to close those streets. We will continue to have recess and gym outside as much as we can on days that there isn't inclement weather. We have updated our fresh air systems. We did so in the middle school gymnasium, the high school gymnasium. We are currently completing projects, starting projects, and then going to be completing them in the month of September for the Connors Gym and the Brant Cafeteria as well. All of the other schools have unit ventilators. We put portable HEPA units in every classroom and in every office. We changed our desk shield protocol a little bit based on research that is out regarding air circulation. So, we will have desk shields in every classroom for teachers to use if they need to use during snack time, when the children will be having snack, particularly at the elementary level, and also during lunchtime. At the preschool level and kindergarten level, when the children are at tables and facing one another in a fairly small area, we will keep the plexiglass on the tables as an extra matter of precaution. Windows will stay open at the height that we're required to have them open. And lastly, a few other items. We developed an updated COVID protocol for daily use that we will use. We'll continue to use the Genesis platform for that. We will also use the Genesis platform to upload vaccination cards or proof-of-vaccination copies, not the actual cards, which staff members and children over the age of 12, their parents, will be asked to submit. I'm using the word "asked" because we're not actually saying "required" because people do have the right to say they do not want to submit that, and if they so choose not to submit those cards or proof of vaccination, they would simply shift over into the testing category. The requirement allows for testing twice a week. We're going to do the testing once a week. We think on Friday would be a good day to actually do the testing so that we have the ability to organize and manage the results over the weekend and contact any families or staff members that may, in fact, have tested positive, and then do our work with the close-contact tracing in order to be ready to open school on the following Monday or the day after the weekend. So, those are some of the major changes or updates to the plan, but our cleaning protocols are going to remain the same. In addition, our arrival and dismissal procedures will stay the same. The temperature stands will remain at the opening entrances. Everything else in the plan remains the same except for those particular items. So, that's the update that I have regarding the reopening plan, and I think that last year, we learned a lot from having the plan rolled out, and after a couple months, there were some things that we realized, actually even a few things that we realized after a few weeks. We made adjustments to the plan. It was very fluid, and this year, we hope to do the same. We hope to, you know, start the school off, year off, with a plan that seems to have all of the requirements met and the safety protocols met, and then, as we go, assess where we stand both locally and statewide with both COVID-19 and the Delta variant, and then if we have to make changes, we certainly will. As we were last year, we will not stay with something because we said it's in the plan, and we will not change it. If it's not working or we feel like we need to make an adjustment, we absolutely will do that. So, with that being said, if any board members have any questions, I'll continue answering the emails that I received today, and then if I receive any tomorrow, I will do so. We'll put out instructions, testing dates, and some protocols out to all families and staff members by the end of the week as well.
Thank you for that very informative report. We appreciate all the time and organization that has gone into it. Okay, we're moving on. We'll actually, do any board members have any questions or nothing tonight? Ms. Lopez, do you have a business administrator's report?
No report at this time.
Okay, moving on to our committee reports. We'll start with curriculum. Ms. Connor?
The committee met virtually on Wednesday, August 18th, at 5:00 PM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatori, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Clufel, and myself. There are no action items on the agenda. Our administrators and staff attended a successful summer retreat training this past month. Our students in grades fourth and up will begin this school year with a 20-day Start Strong curriculum that includes many lessons that will focus on standards for the previous year's grade level, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. Delara.
The Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, August 17th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Katamatori, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. Simons, and myself. The committee met and reviewed all items on the agenda and recommends all for approval. The one thing that I would like to report out is that the high school this year will now have a life experience center, which is a program that will teach our students life skills such as laundry and heating up food and those kind of very important skills, and I'm actually very excited for that as a mom with a child with special needs. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Delatorre.
The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, August 18th, at 7:00 PM. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Simons, Mr. Clufel, and I. We discussed all agenda items and reviewed all and recommend all for approval.
The Governance Committee met virtually on Wednesday, August 18th, at 6:00 PM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatori, Ms. McGurk, Ms. TeKiri, and myself. We reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. We discussed the various aspects of the reopening plan and the efforts that are being made to ensure the school year is as safe as possible. Additionally, we were updated on the orientation that will be taking place for new staff and how each school will welcome new hires to the district. Thank you.
And Wellness, back to Ms. Delara.
Sure. The committee met on August 17th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Simon, and myself. The committee reviewed and discussed the updated guidance from the DOE and the CDC regarding school opening. Dr. Johnson shared with us her updated opening plans, just as she just did a few minutes ago, with the board, and we were all able to express our questions and input on her opening plans. The committee also reviewed the menus for all the schools for breakfast and lunch. We do have a new lunch provider with Chartwell, so we were able to just sit down and review all of the menus. We gave our feedback, and we're happy with the way that, so far, we're working with Chartwell and we're excited for the school year with them. In addition, we also were informed that our school SROs will begin a series of talks with all of our schools. Our talks, the talks will encompass bike safety, pedestrian safety, anti-bullying, social media safety, what it takes to become a police officer, the role of the SRO in your schools, and driver education safety. These talks- These talks will take place for grades K through 12, and they will begin in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's hard to believe that school will begin in just a few short weeks. As Dr. Johnson spoke about tonight, the administration has been working extremely hard to finalize the district's plan for the '21-'22 school year. And we really look forward to another successful year this year. Moving on to public comments on agenda items only. Do we have any speakers?
Nobody signed up.
Okay. So next, we will move on. On an agenda item? Okay. Please state your name, municipality of residence, and you will have five minutes.
Yeah, can you hear me? So my name is Jim Dugan. I'm a resident of Hoboken, New Jersey. I understand you all are trying to do your best with these vaccines. But I would encourage you to dig a little bit deeper into the potential side effects and ramifications of giving these to young children especially. Now, some of the stuff I'm going to read from you is directly from the CDC, FDA, as well as a coalition of hundreds of doctors from around the world. So this is not a standard vaccine. It's a gene therapy vaccine that's never been used on humans before. It's never been licensed for use. The safety and effectiveness studies for children and pregnant women are not going to be completed until the end of 2023 and 2025. That's from the FDA approval letter for the Pfizer vaccine. They have no idea what the long-term effects of this vaccine are going to do to children, pregnant women, even adults. And this is for a virus that has a 99.997% survival rate for children between the ages of 1 and 19 years of age. The FDA does acknowledge long-term risks, although I'm sure many of you have not heard of them. I'm aware of these because I had family members who suffered serious adverse events after getting the vaccine. Some of these risks are paralysis, stroke, convulsions, seizures, autoimmune disease, pregnancy and birth outcomes, multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, and death. I'm happy to share this FDA presentation with any of you, if you would like to see it. Now, there is a coalition of hundreds of doctors from around the world who are speaking out against this. They're called Doctors for COVID Ethics. You can visit their website for more information. It's doctorsforcovidethics.org. And some of the statements they've made is that the vaccines cause lethal and non-lethal disruptions of blood clotting, including bleeding disorders, thrombosis in the brain, stroke, and heart attack, antibody-dependent enhancement, as well as autoimmune disease. They also claim that the blood disorders, myocarditis and pericarditis that you've seen in the media, are only the tip of a large iceberg. On top of that, the vaccines do not stop transmission. And the effectiveness at stopping hospitalization is waning around the world, especially in Israel. You can look at that data for yourself. I just want to make sure that you are all aware of this when you're encouraging young children to get these vaccines, because you really don't know. And you're putting your faith in these regulators who have messed up before. The CDC has been caught doing things that have harmed thousands, tens of thousands of people. So my advice would be to make sure that all of these parents have enough information to make an informed decision about their children. I appreciate you letting me talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No other speakers? Okay. Then we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes.
Ms. Karamatori?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
No on 9.04, item 6, and yes on everything else.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Conna? Mr. Klufel?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
There were no speakers signed up.
Okay. So that will conclude our meeting. And do I have a motion adjourned?
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.